...as it drops. And so, there's a... frankly, I'm a little skeptical about using the 747. I wish somebody else would use it on another incident, not here in Ventura County. But, there's a whole lot of new technologies being used, a whole lot of different infrared, thermal imaging cameras from satellites and so forth, to try to manage and give us the best intel on this fire. Besides the two community meetings in Santa Paula and Ojai, we've also conducted two additional ones that, per Kern County's request, one in Fraser Park and one in the Pine Mountain Club area in Kern County. Because those two communities are areas of risk if the fire gets across Lockwood Valley Road. Today, we still do not have a problem getting resources. Equipment was being demobilized yesterday during the day from the structure threat we had in the Ojai-Santa Paula area. And then, last night, when the Lockwood Valley fire extended itself, we moved resources from the fairground immediately up to the Lockwood Valley area. So, the incident is very dynamic, and we're flexible, and we can do that. It's just the travel time that we have to take to get resources up there. And Supervisor Flynn, at last week's meeting, you requested to make sure that we were very communicative within the Hispanic community. And I wanted to introduce my webmaster, Gretchen Wallace. And if you go and look at our webpage, she has made it so it's in English, and click on a button, and the entire page is in Spanish now. We have communicated with Telemundo Television, radio stations, and print, too. So, we believe we've met your objective that you gave us last week. With that being said, every day is a challenge for us still. I'd like to say that we have this contained. Originally, yesterday before the blowouts, we were looking at October 2nd to try to have 100% containment. So, that's just kind of a moving target right now. But, we do want to express the people in the southern part of the county here that we feel good with the containment lines. They will see smoke up Santa Paula Canyon for probably a week. They may see major puffs of smoke, and those are islands within the burn. But, one of the things we want to do is make sure that we lessen the damage to the Santa Paula drains. We want to protect that watershed because of the downstream effects during the winter. And that's one of our key goals right now. Available for you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Supervisor Bennett?
I just would like... number one, I appreciate all the great work in the community meeting we had in Ojai, and I assume you had the same good meeting in Santa Paula last night. But, I'd like to talk a little bit about the reverse 911. I know that capability exists in Fillmore, I understand, I know the Ventura Unified School District, but they... let's just ask for everybody involved in our emergency side of it. Upper Ojai was just a classic example of where that could have been very valuable because we were putting the recommended evacuation on, then we wanted to switch back to the precautionary, and we almost went back and forth over the last, you know, 14 days, three or four times. And, so, in your opinion, and is there... where are we with the reverse 911? I know it's not perfect, cellphones aren't on there. I also had a conversation with Ventura Unified. They actually had people list cellphones on reverse 911. So, can you help me with that? It seems like as technology gets better, and we can bring in 747s, technology is also getting better, and we should be able to do reverse 911 at some point in time.
Supervisor Bennett, reverse 911 is a priority with the department. In fact, we had it on our to-do list a couple of years ago. And, we anticipate now with the financial situation of the county improving that we'll be able to hopefully implement reverse 911 within the next three to six months. Saves a tremendous amount of work for our personnel, and it's a good way to get information out to the community, not only on evacuations, but just regular updates on the fires. So, it is one of our top priorities, and I know Laura's working very diligently on that. We have gone out and explored different systems, and whether we wanted our own system and the cost of that versus contracting it out. And so, we are looking at that currently.
Great. Okay. Seems to me it actually makes everybody safer. You don't have to send your personnel around as much. You can update more frequently, so people don't do... people make better decisions all the way around and stuff, so that'd be great.
Extremely valid points. It's an officer safety issue from our standpoint.
Great. Thank you.
And that would be a 911 countywide, a reverse 911 countywide.
No, just in district.
Because I know we were looking at that when they had fires near Oak Park, too. I had a couple of questions, too. Just looking at the type of man and woman power that you have out there, I imagine a lot of it is the Forest Service, and if you can kind of go there and give us some information on that.
Okay. Right now, the whole incident's managed by what we call Unified Incident Command. And, it's comprised of a lot of Forest Service, a lot of California Department Forestry people, and a whole lot of local government. I would say it's probably one-third divided among all three entities. Because of the number of fires throughout, still across the Pacific Southwest, no one agency can do that. But, I would like to acknowledge the hard work of all the volunteers. It's one thing to have volunteers work for one night, but we've had volunteers from the search and rescue teams, from the DART teams, from American Red Cross, to the animal control volunteers. And I think really the volunteers really need a hand for the number of days that they persevered in this.
It is a long fire. And then, also, as I understand, the governor did go ahead and do their local declaration of emergency or disaster. And now, we'll be waiting to see if money will be coming with that to help reimburse these costs.
Yeah, I imagine what Laura will do is in the days to come, we'll get the finite details of exactly the reimbursement, how much, and the process.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes. Would you update us regularly, every two, three days, as to where we are with getting the funding from the governor? Because I think that helped before, was when it... the more public it became, and, you know, having the declaration of emergency is nice, but it really has to have the funding with it, in terms of that. So, great.
Thank you. Yes, Supervisor?
Just one last comment, certainly to thank all of you for the tremendous work and effort that's gone on. I saw a clip on the news, I think it was yesterday, and it was a firefighter from out of our county who'd come in response, and he was commenting on what a well-run operation, how fully staffed it was, and just so coordinated. And he actually said, "This is fun." Which, okay, if you think this is fun, but it was good to hear, because it really speaks volumes about how we do have it. We really have an organized, coordinated, cooperative effort here with all the mutual aid agreements and the cooperation we get. And that's what makes a difference to the residents, so thank you all.
I could just follow up on that. The one comment everybody from the outside agencies is truly impressed is the relationship between the law branch and the fireside. Because most people don't have that at all. And so, that's really been what's been impressing people around here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some public comment cards from the public. Carol Dean Williams, and followed by, I believe the name is... I'm going to guess and say racial prejudice? Ah, racial prejudice. Got it. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Carol Dean Adam Williams, 61-year resident. I really appreciated the rabbi's talk. He enlightened me. I'm here under the Brown Act to publicly criticize this board, under the First Amendment, and the rabbi blessed my words as kosher. So, I'm going to begin with the Hebrew. And did any of you go to the movies? The headlines are jackass. The jackass. The headlines. So, this is from Genesis 44:13. Blessed by the rabbi. And they rent their clothes for a dollar a day, and laded every man his ass, and returned to the county. Well, I asked him about that Hebrew word ass, and he educated me. Now, I know why they call the movie Jackass. This Hebrew word is the female. And every man laded his ass. And these are real asses. But, the females and the jack, the male. And this is a hole. That's what we call a hole. And if you put the two together, we have Steve Bennett. He's the champion of finance reform. At least, he's staying at his seat today instead of running in the back room, as the champion shouldn't do. And the acorn cracked a little nut here. File a complaint form with the Ventura County Campaign Finance Ethic Commission, and that complaint will be evaluated for merit eventually. You said you have procedures to remove commissioners for cause. No, 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 you say a commissioner can be removed for cause, but no procedure to do So, since one of your commissioners is French, since she used Latin, if you pass an ordinance when you don't know stercum about the subject, you are spatum tere. And if you understand French, if you pass an ordinance when you don't know se re que de la merce about the subject, you are un tro do co. Your ordinance says every complaint has to be delivered to the district attorney within 24 hours. Oh, man, this is important. Boy, this is getting on it. File a complaint with the Ventura County Campaign Finance Ethic Commission, and that complaint will be evaluated for merit eventually. Like, a year later? Like, a year later? The people's representative, Steve Bennett, comes in office, and he's gonna make it possible for everyone to run. He's got $80,000. But, you can only collect money in an election cycle. He's setting on $80,000. He wouldn't have to raise another penny. But, a poor man like me has to start from zero. Start with zero with me, Mr. Bennett. Let's don't spend any money. Let's take all the money out of this corruption politics. Let's take it all out. Brian Brenner gave us a small example. He didn't put up one sign, didn't spend one penny, and got reelected city council.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Williams. And this is Arthur Munoz, not racial prejudice. I guess that's what your subject is?
Yeah, correct. That's what it is.
That's, yes. And the next speaker is Lou Matthews.
You know, I'm here to address the repugnant discrimination and prejudice that has been in this county for as long as it's been. I mean, people forget the times where, you know, in order for a black officer to be hired onto the sheriff's department, he had to sue the sheriff. Or people, you know, try to overlook the fact that certain real estate areas here in Ventura have certain stipulations that you have to sign, or agreements that you have to sign, and meaning that you, in order to be... you have to be pre-approved by the community in order to be brought in. This has kept blacks and Latinos and people of color from the communities. More so than that, what I have is an issue involving me personally, but I'm a voice for people. I'm gonna be a voice for people suffering racial prejudice and discrimination here in the county of Ventura. This is kind of impromptu, and it's kind of evolving in that I didn't expect to make a comment of what the rabbi had said this morning. Without due respect to the rabbi, I think he was 100% off the mark when he said that people that are in public office in the 21st century are that chosen by God. He is emphatically and undoubtedly wrong, as far as I'm concerned. Maybe in the 12 tribes of Israel, and maybe in the time of Moses. But, here today, in this present time, it's anything but the case, as people can reflect on themselves that are in government position, and reflect on those around them, and understand that things are anything but godly. I was addressing an issue involving, last week, involving discrimination involving a rogue Superior Court judge that I described as a sick and twisted man. His name was Lawrence Storch. As I left, and I had said something... I referred about my father being killed in Vietnam for truth and justice and for this country, and in his... in his memory, in his memory, all I got from that was injustice from Ventura County. As I was leaving, somebody had muttered loser, or something of that nature, one of the sure police officials. And a couple of days ago, I come to the courthouse, and I'd come to address some traffic issues and some issue I had going on that's anyway separate, involving also discrimination. At any rate, upon exiting the building, an officer approached me, and among other things, he had said, "What were you doing at the board meeting a couple of days ago?" He kind of like, you know, was trying to sort of maybe be intimidating, trying to maybe infer that, you know, all eyes are on me, or whatever it might be. But, the bottom line here are the facts. And the facts are, what occurred in a criminal trial in 1990 involved a case where one of the... one of the... the... one of the sentence... part of the sentence was a $3,000 restitution. The judge had ordered that I pay a $3,000 restitution, dollar restitution, and ordered that the probation department come up with a bill. Well, subsequently, the probation department came up with an excuse. It said that the person that this money was to be paid to had filed for bankruptcy, wherefore this person would no longer be responsible for the bill, wherefore they believed no longer I would be responsible for the bill. Anybody that knows anything about law or business or anything, rather about bankruptcies or business or anything, I mean, finances of that nature, knows that they wouldn't... the law wouldn't think twice about imposing that bill upon me, and that issue involving the $3,000 would be counted towards that person's credit for, well, it was seven years or maybe 10 years then. And then, it would put at bay the creditors, and then after that fact, after that seven to 10-year period when the bankruptcy was over, the creditors would have free rein to go after that person again. But, this shows the type of corruption that that judge and the people involved had, even reaching as far as to the probation department. You know, making up such a fraudulent excuse. And this case, I mean, it goes on and on. What happened, you know, where truth was denied, evidence was withheld. It sort of involves a total injustice, I mean, with no excuse. I mean, with no rhyme or no reason. And I will be back. I know that my time, I'm very limited. This is an impromptu thing for me, and I will be back. I will be back every Tuesday and address certain parts of what's going on. Because what happened to me robbed me of a decade of my life.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Munoz. See you next time. Our next speaker, then, is Lou Matthews. Good morning, Ms. Matthews.
Good morning. Good morning to you and other members of the board, Mr. Johnson, and other people here today. My name, of course, is Lou Matthews. I live in Ventura. And I'm speaking this morning as a NAMI member. I am on the mental health board, but I speak today as a NAMI member, a family member, and a mental health advocate. And I have several questions to ask, but first, I'd like to speak of the excitement that we all feel in the mental health community, and the hope that we are feeling with the implementation of the Mental Health Services Act. And my thanks to the board for your commitment to the mentally ill in this county. I've always been aware of that, but I was made more aware when I served on the state NAMI board and talked to other people from other places. And my reason today is that I would like to ask several questions about the proposed demolition of the behavioral health building, and also the building of the five-tower structure. What is the board's timetable for beginning demolition and construction of the five-story building? And when will you issue a public announcement and invite public input about this? And more specifically, what are the conditions that drove the decision to demolish the 300 Hillmont Building? I've talked with numerous people about this, but it's not clear what conditions forced this or caused this plan to come about, to destroy the building. And if the building does come down, and I hope that's not necessary, I understand that there is a parking structure slated to go in that site, which is right next to the Hillmont residential facility. And I'm asking that that be reconsidered if the building should come down, because people live right next door, and it's really within steps. In fact, those buildings are right now connected. And I have a map that I brought to give to each of you that shows, and I recognize that I'm a layperson looking at a map, that looks as though it would be a good alternative for a parking structure that could save the building, or at least remove it from the site that you have now proposed. I ask these questions because the behavioral health building is relatively new. It could serve many unmet needs. I mean, there is a need for a continuum of care, that people can move back and forth as their illness wanes and then gets worse. And that happens even when people have treatment. And so, if they can go to someplace... but, there are many uses. That's just one. That's just one that I happen to think would be very valuable. And it's interesting that when builders are given perks and credits for building low-cost housing, that housing is encumbered for 55 years. If that is the life of a building, this building has another 20 years. So, why not leave it for at least another 10? I recognize that you have many issues that come before you here, but I hope that you will reconsider this, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Matthews. Appreciate them. We'll get you back the information. And I believe that concludes our public comments for this morning. Our next item on the agenda, then, is our board comments. And I'll start on my left. Supervisor Bennett, do you have any board comments this morning?
I do. Thank you. The... I just... I noted in the newspaper the other day, the... with the new accounting requirements, many municipalities will have to be reporting their unfunded healthcare obligations for people. And in checking out Ventura County, I think we're gonna find that we're in very good shape by comparison to other organizations. And we have, I think it's partially a function of the fact that there have been some times when we've exercised discipline and not said yes to some of those requests. And I would offer, you know, some people talk about, you know, that funding and, you know, not doing those things in terms of what's gonna happen in terms of service. I would offer, we will have better long-term service here in Ventura County because of those decisions that we made. We'll have more public safety. We'll have more outreach for foster children and all of that, because we didn't encumber the future with those excessive benefits. So, I just wanted to point that out to us as that article came out, and as the new accounting standards kick in, we'll have a very modest amount to report by comparison, certainly to other counties that will really have some hits. And I'd like to ask the board to adjourn memory of the people on this list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Supervisor Flynn? No comments? And Supervisor Long?
Thank you, and good morning. I have a list to submit for adjournment memory of residents in the district. We appreciate the board doing so. And I'd like to provide to the board, and certainly available to anyone in the public, just a nomination form that is now made public for nominations being accepted for the 14th Annual David C. Fainer Awards Dinner. The dinner this year will be in February, but the committee starts early with looking at nominations. And it's really an opportunity to honor the medical professionals in our community who do outstanding work, our nurses, our public health nurses, our doctors, and healthcare professionals, and volunteers. So, encourage the board members to look at your district and think about folks you might wish to nominate. And that's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
And I would just... two comments. One is, over the last week, we saw two very tragic accidents of youth in crosswalks in the county. And just the note that we need to do everything that we can, both as drivers to be careful, obviously, when you see crosswalks, but also to make them as safe as we possibly can, whether that's, you know, putting in those LED diodes, getting things painted, just really need to alert people. And we're seeing more and more traffic, and that's having a greater impact in our residential neighborhoods, too, as we're seeing. So, we really need to do everything that we can to try to avoid these kind of situations. Also, I wanted to point out that I think Thursday, VCOG, the Ventura Council of Governments, and VCTC, the Ventura County Transportation Commission, will be meeting together, and hopefully, we'll have a forum, so I encourage all our board members to attend, and be able to start talking about some regional government, and the idea of combining these two agencies, so you're not just looking at transportation or the regional issues, but actually putting them together, so you can start looking at the impacts that transportation makes, and the impact that housing makes, and just start looking more regionally. And I think that will be really good, if we can move in that direction, and be able to also probably leverage more funding to implement our, for example, our general plans of our county and our cities. So, I'm looking forward to that. And that concludes the board's comments on the agenda. Supervisor Bennett?
Just one other question. For our clerk, I don't have an advanced calendar up here for this week. Do we have those? Do we pass those?
Okay. And also, Robert, if you can give us the map that Ms. Matthews submitted. I haven't seen that yet. And then, we'll move on to our regularly... we've got about three minutes before our 9:30 time certain, so we'll move on to our regularly scheduled agenda, and that starts off with item 25. This is regarding the authorization to execute a lease. Ms. Krieger?
Good morning, madam chair. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson. We're here this morning with good news. As you all know and have seen, the Hampton Inn was under demolition for some time, and after eight months of back and forth, the building permits have finally been issued. So, they are ready to begin construction. Their contractor is standing by, awaiting the execution of this memorandum of extended lease, once they fulfill all the requirements, which are summarized on the second page of the board letter here, most of which are complete today. We're just waiting for a FedEx to come this morning. Then, that memorandum of extended lease can be executed, changing their end of lease from 14 years from now to 55 years from now. We have been reviewing documents. I have to tell you, I take a little pleasure in the fact that their construction contract is even thicker than their lease, and it only lasts for nine months. So, we're in very good shape. The owner is represented here, and would like to say a word, so unless there are questions. What we are asking is authority to submit to the board chair, which we hope will be today, and we hope to get it signed as soon as possible, the memorandum, as soon as we have the final piece of paper.
Thank you. Yes, if you'd like to come up, I don't know if I have a card for you, so after you speak, if you could submit one, that would be great. And if you can give us your name.
It's Wes Fuller with Gray Star Real Estate Partners. It's my pleasure to stand here this morning to give you an update on the Hampton Inn. It was about a year ago today that we spoke about the extension of these leases in these projects that we have at the harbor, and we're progressing rapidly on all of them. projects that we have at the harbor, and we're progressing rapidly on all these projects. Rapidly, I guess, relative terms, but we feel like we're working diligently to get these projects done. The Hampton Inn is a great pleasure that we're almost at the cusp of commencing full construction. Our schedule has us completing the project by March of 2007, which is great news. We'd like to have that hotel open for the busy summer season at the harbor. It'll be the first time that the community's had a new hotel to stay and enjoy the harbor, and we're looking forward to providing that. Again, you know, this is the first definitely many projects we have planned for the harbor, and we appreciate your support, not only on a year ago for the extension of the leases, also for the signing of this extended lease, but also for future projects. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have about the Hampton Inn or any of our other projects at the harbor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I just have a second. I just have a question. Do you represent who?
Gray Star Real Estate Partners.
Okay.
So we do have a motion and a second on the table. Seeing no objections, that passes. And I would just ask, in the future, when we have these agenda items where we talk about a particular parcel, a three, if we can do a little better job in identifying it for the public, for example, if you wrote Hampton Inn in here, that would have been more informative. Thank you. Thank you for your time and also your efforts out there at the harbor. Nice to see the Hampton Inn coming.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to our first 9:30 and our last 9:30. Our 9:30 time certain item then is a resolution, and a very special resolution at that. This is proclaims February 15, 2006, as the National POW MIA Recognition Day. We're a few days off, but I would like, I really appreciate the fact that we have you here today. I know it's Jim Fennell, the Senior Advisor of Local Chapter 1311 with the Air Forces here, and also Joyce Seiler, Vice President of Auxiliary, and the President of our Gold Star WISE. Glad to see you here. And I will, I guess we're going to have a little presentation from you. And before we do that, I'd like to just read this resolution and present that to you, okay? And the resolution reads, "We are proclaiming National POW MIA Recognition Day. And whereas the noble ideas that became our nation's constitutional foundation were formed over two centuries ago in the hearts of courageous patriots who risked their lives in the name of liberty, and throughout our history, American patriots have risen to answer the call when enemies of freedom have jeopardized our liberties. And whereas our military history is replete with heroes who put love of country above their own well-being, and in answering the call to defend our ideals, generations of brave Americans have left home and family to protect our great nation, some never to return. National POW MIA Recognition Day is even more significant for many American families, reminding us of men and women who withstood great hardship while imprisoned by our nation's enemies. And whereas it also reminds us of those still missing, loved ones lost at war but whose fate is not fully known, remembering that 50,000 POWs live within our communities, including those held captive during World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, throughout the Cold War era, during Operations Desert Storm and Iraqi Freedom. And whereas we owe an incalculable debt of gratitude to these quiet heroes who displayed great honor and indomitable wills and who sacrificed so much for our nation, and to the families of those who are still missing, we renew our unwavering commitment and determination to obtain the fullest accounting for them, including their recovery and repartation and the identification of the remains of those who have died. And whereas the County of Ventura joins others in the state and the nation to proclaim September 15, 2006, as POW MIA Recognition Day, which serves as a powerful reminder to all Americans that we will always keep faith with those who served our nation with honor, integrity, and great sacrifice, remembering those still missing and honoring those who were imprisoned during war." And it reads now, "Therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors calls on the residents of Ventura County to join in honoring former American prisoners of war who suffered the hardships of enemy captivity and renewing our commitment to those still missing in action in observance of National POW MIA Recognition Day." And if you'd like to come down to the microphone, and I'll come join you. All right, so let me present you with this. Thank you very much for your service, and also to you and your husband. Thank you very much. We could have a picture taken there. Thank you. And then if you'd like to go ahead and tell us about your table, I would be very much glad to hear it. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please look towards the front of the room here, where we have a table that is set for one. This table is for a special group that cannot be with us here today. They are America's prisoners of war and missing in action. They are commonly referred to as POWs and MIA's, but we call them brothers and sisters. There are three flags prominently displayed today that tell a story. For over 200 years, old glory has symbolized courage, faith, hope, and characteristic of the American people. The Air Force flag reflects the camaraderie and pride that we have shared throughout our fifty-plus-year history of men gaining supremacy in the sky. The POW flag tells of the fight of those that have been held captive. The black represents the incarceration. The white represents hope. The barbed wire tells of their fight. The chair is facing away from us. This is an unknown face, representing no one individual, but all of them. The chair is empty, symbolizing the aloneness that they must endure. The table, set for one, is small, symbolizing the frailty of one alone against his oppressors. The table cloth is white, symbolizing the purity of their intentions to respond to their country's call to arm. The Bible represents faith in our God, which helps sustain our comrades through what they must now pass. The dish is black and represents the emptiness of our missing loved ones have left in the hearts of their families. An inner circle of fellowship. The wine glass is inverted. They cannot toast with us today. The slice of lemon on the plate is to remind us of their bitter face. There is salt on the plate, representing the tears of their loved ones. You will notice the bouquet laying across the plate. The red rose is for those that gave their lives for their country. The white rose is for those that returned and are with us. The yellow rose is for those that are missing and we hope will return to us soon. The red ribbon around the bouquet is for our love of country and comrades who are willing to give their all for our freedom. The black candle burns slowly to show that we are mourning those that are still not accounted for. The yellow ribbon around the base of the candle is for hope and joy when all are finally returned home. The lighting in the candle shows our vigilance for those still missing. Ladies and gentlemen, can we please bow our heads for a moment of recognition for these Thank you very much. And before I leave, I will mention that our administrator, Dick Sobby, was a prisoner of war in World War II. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you also for your service to our country and to assist those who do serve. Our next item on our agenda then is item 26, I believe it is. And this is regarding our healthcare agency, the Behavioral Health Department. Good morning, Ms. Shulman.
Good morning. We are here to ask for permission to apply for a grant that we already applied for and got.
But it makes a lot of sense. You should get that permission.
The Ventura County Community Foundation holds a fund that is specifically geared towards funding training activities within the Mental Health Department. And in order for us to access that money, we have to put a request forward to their board, and then they make sure that it meets the terms of the fund and then ultimately approve it. And in the process of doing so, we asked for $15,600 to pay for some specialized training by the Los Angeles Child Guidance Center. We want to start really focusing in on some earlier intervention and prevention with youth. This is a specialized training for dealing with youth ages zero to five. And they, the Los Angeles Child Guidance Center will not only train our staff in some very special techniques in this service, but also provide clinical supervision over 10 staff, so that over the course of the next few years, we can really impact some of our younger children's lives and provide some new evidence-based practice services that we think will ultimately keep these people out of our system in the long run. And...
Thank you. We do have a motion to move the ratification, but I would like to hear the rest of what you're saying and also to answer why we're ratifying this instead of you coming as normal process.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
I'm really done with what the grant would be for. The Green Black Fund, we have to write them a letter, and then ultimately they approve it, and then we bring it back to your board in order to receive the funds. We could come to your board first, but then the timing of when this training would occur and the timing of us being able to get through their board when they had their board meetings and the scheduling of those things didn't coincide. And so in order for us to get the letter to the Ventura County Community Foundation Fund when their board meetings were meeting rather than here, and then we would have to come back to your board to receive the money, would have made us not be able to do the training until sometime in January, and we felt it was more important to move forward.
Well, thank you. And I don't think there's anything controversial or anything about this, but it's always nice to be able to see what we're applying for grants for. And certainly, accepting the money and all that is something that, you know, we've already said, "Go for the grant." We're not going to object to that. But just the idea that we're going and applying for grants, it'd be nice to know in advance what those grants are for. We have a motion from Supervisor Flynn and a second from Supervisor Long, and seeing no objections, that passes. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Our next item is item 27 with our Human Services Agency. And this is regarding a submittal of a grant application.
Good morning. My name is Tom Nykirk. I'm the interim chair of the Workforce Investment Board, your board, and good morning. We're in a similar situation. We receive most of our money from the Department of Labor, and they periodically will release requests for proposals, and the timing doesn't always coincide with your board's convening. So we are requesting as well to have the ratification of our submittal. It's a Department of Labor grant to provide additional training in the healthcare biotech fields. It's unique in the sense where we've convened the three community colleges together to provide this training. Ventura College will be focusing on phlebotomy. As those of you may be aware, that there is new state certifications in that area that prohibit people from drawing blood unless they're recertified under the new requirements. So they'll be providing that instruction in a much-needed field. Oxnard College will be providing training in the dental assisting program, has an excellent, nationally-recognized program that we'll be continuing working with them. And Vinch, I'm sorry, Moore Park College will be working in the area of biotech. They're revamping their existing curriculum and to meet the needs of our local biotech industries. The grant is in the amount of approximately $1.7 million, leveraging over $1 million in assets within the community colleges and our existing workforce programs, job and career centers, and so forth. It is, again, as it references, 424 people will be served in this grant. We're projecting to have 80% or more of them to be placed into job opportunities to support our healthcare and biotech industry. Any questions that I might answer?
Just to thank you for continuing working to see that we can get funds to help your mission and our mission, to see that we can help training and get people into the workforce in the health field. So that's nice. But yours isn't like the last one in the sense that you're not actually asking for us to accept the money yet, are you?
No, no. We don't know whether we'll be funded.
Hopefully, that will occur.
Yes. It's a national-based grant, very competitive, and so we'll see. And if we are in fact fortunate enough to be awarded, we think it's justified, we will be returning to your board for approval and acceptance of this notice.
And the reason why, again, that we're ratifying is, was there a timing issue on this?
Yes. Our application was submitted at the end of August, and they have tight deadlines. And many times, we don't receive information on these grants until it's a matter of a couple of weeks to prepare us. So our apologies, timing wasn't...
And the board was dark in August. We have some questions on this. Supervisor Long, then Supervisor Bennett?
And if I miss this, I apologize. It had to be submitted by the 29th, but what, do you see the timeline for the granting of it?
Oh, November.
November, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I note that the grant was due on the 29th, and we had a board meeting on the 29th. Could it have been ratified and submitted then on that day?
It's my understanding that the timing still wouldn't have allowed us to do that. We were still working on getting the fine tuning from the various partners. I apologize, Supervisor Bennett, but...
And I'm fine. I'm not interested in being real, but I have two suggestions. One for our CEO, and that is, you know, we get these regularly, these sort of grant ratifications after the fact. We have a thing in here that says recommendation, we have fiscal mandates. Why don't you just have a, just a segment that says, explanation as to why, you know, and give us more. I'd like to have more than just, we had a tight timeframe, and we didn't. Give us specifically, you know, I mean, because I read this and I went, well, we met that day. We could have approved it that morning, and you could have submitted it that afternoon. I think you're telling me that you didn't have it ready that day on the 29th.
Well, we were in the process of completing the submittal. It wasn't, the application itself wasn't ready at the time. It would have been a futuristic, I guess, proposal. We did work with the CEO's office in reviewing what our intentions were at that time.
I still don't understand. I mean, just be clear.
Okay.
The thing was due on the 29th. Was the application ready on the...
The application was submitted on the 29th of August.
Okay. So it could have come to us that morning, and you could have submitted it then on the... No, I mean, it could have been put on the agenda on the Wednesday before, saying, hey, on the 29th, we're going to submit, right?
Correct. I would guess so, yes.
Okay.
Well, I guess what I was fumbling through was that the, at that point, the prior week or two before, we were still in the process of putting the grant application together and trying to reach consensus with the community colleges. So we would have been bringing forth something in work in process at that time when we would have filed for the board letter. So that's my apologies.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you what's fine with me, is to say, "We blew it."
We blew it.
You know? That actually works better for me than to just sort of imply that there wasn't any other way. And just, I'm fine with that. But I'd like to have just something quick. I can read it and go, okay, I'm done, and not even have to come here and have these questions. That's my suggestion request.
Mr. Johnston, did you want to comment?
I was just saying, we could say that we will include a section that will give the specific reason for the delay, as opposed to just saying it's a timing thing.
And authorize people that it's fine to say, "We blew it." I would rather, I'd rather you say, "We blew it, but we're going to go get that money," than to not get the money because you're afraid to say you blew it. It's just going to happen sometimes, but if 99% of our grants get ratified in advance and we make a mistake, I'd still rather have the money. I'd just rather not have the mystery.
Madam Chair, I move that we recognize that we blew it and that we approve the ratification.
We're trying to approve second.
I have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Michael, who have been proud of this discussion we just had.
I know. Actually, it was done in her honor. You have to fill in for her vacancy there. So thank you for your efforts on this. I can see where you were under some time pressures to get that grant in, and good luck.
Well, and the bottom line is a wonderful opportunity.
It is.
Exciting, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is item 28, and this is regarding the grand jury responses from the county. Back to the grand jury. Good morning, Mr. Ruffin. Good morning, Mr. Ruffin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. Staff requesting that you approve our responses to the grand jury report for 2005, 2006. Attached to the board letter was a table that showed the different reports that were provided by the grand jury and for which recommendations county departments, the CEO, or the board was asked to provide a response. The agencies and the departments provided their responses to CEO, and it's compiled and presented in the document in front of you. There were four instances in which the Board of Supervisors was also asked to provide a response. The CEO drafted those responses, and those are also in front of you. If there are some amendments that you would want staff to make to those proposed responses, staff will be able to make those changes, provide a final document to the grand jury by October 1st.
We have some comments or questions, Mr. Bennett?
I just appreciate the fact that in grand jury report number five, on page three, I appreciate the fact that we do have in there the response that the Board of Supervisors strongly agrees with the grand jury's recommendation, R07. The board recognized that particularly when we speak from the DA's, we have an ability to dramatically tarnish an individual or company's reputation. Our board stands against the inherently unfair practice of making public accusations that are claimed to be supported by evidence, but then withholding the evidence. Such a practice makes it impossible for the accused to defend themselves against groundless accusations. The board agrees with the grand jury that if a board member is going to make an allegation of malfeasance, they have a responsibility to promptly and publicly provide the evidence at the same time they make the public allegation. So, I'm very happy to see that we have that included in our grand jury report number five. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Flynn?
As I indicated before at an earlier meeting, I would write a minority report on the harbor issue, the grand jury report, and I did that, and the evidence is clearly there. Mr. Bennett is free to ask me for a copy of the minority report, but I will be coming to the board one of these days to give a complete report on that, but the written material is available in the documentation.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Well, I'd like to see that minority report. Just, I'll ask you for it officially, and I don't know that there's been a process for majority-minority reports. I don't see us as being the Supreme Court, but I'd still like to see the report. I would like to compliment the probation agency on their reply on Prop. 36, and I'd like to call out, if I can, what I pulled out of that is six significant recommendations and steps that were taken with our behavioral health agency and all of the parties. Certainly, the first one was to the lead agency status, and the second one was to effective July of '06 was that the contracted outpatient treatment providers were required to be or become drug-medical certified to offset our cost of treatment and to use our funds more effectively. And the third one was that the assessment was immediately moved to a new location in the Hall of Justice. We know that's a significant step to capture these folks when they first come out of the courtroom, and that was a very successful move in response to concerns and grand jury issues raised earlier. And then the fourth one was that the number of unsuccessful terminations had increased, but the percentage of successful completions had also, has also risen. So, we're seeing some progress, positive progress on response to the Prop. 36. And the fifth one was in '06-'07, the county will be contracting with a dual-diagnosis treatment provider to provide specialized services to our dual-diagnosis population, which we identified as being a real concern for us and really making a difference in this population. And the sixth was that we're looking at fall of this year to have an implementation date in response to the assessment and the assessment findings, and really to continue to move forward and be positive and work as a team on response to Prop. 36. And I think it has been both healthy for the grand jury review, but healthier for us to have an internal dialogue and communication to really work at what we know the voters, believe the voters really intended, which is to reach a population in a preventative model that reaches out to them to really change the path that they're on, to make a difference in our system and a difference in our community. So, the probation agency, excellent report, I know in conjunction with behavioral health. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, and I would note too regarding Supervisor Bennett's comment, or actually, the grand jury's comment, that you should provide evidence and documentation on allegations, or unless it's an opinion, say it's an opinion, that this is also kind of a timely discussion going on in Washington D.C. right now, whether prisoners from the war should be able to know why they're being held and have the evidence before them too. But it's actually just a basic right in our Constitution of the United States that you don't, at least in terms of prisoners, that you are able to know what it is you're being charged with, which is kind of a timely discussion now in our nation too. We have several comments, responses that the county has put together for these items. Some actually are not items that our county responds to. I know, for example, the city of Thousand Oaks has a report from the grand jury talking about their level of discussion and lack of respect to constituents, and that's something that, you know, is for them to handle, but I would just note that it's very, I think it's very good the way this process works in the sense that you have detailed responses to comments, and an agency works to make changes in respect to those comments from the grand jury. So, I think it's a good process, and I hope that all agencies are as thorough as we are here at the county in responding to those and attempting to make changes where necessary. Supervisor Bennett?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the recommended action and make one final comment. The grand jury report, in terms of providing evidence, strongly suggests that it needs to be promptly provided. Providing the evidence six months after somebody's reputation has been tarnished hardly meets the spirit, I think, of what the grand jury is referring to. So, with that, I'd like to move the recommended action that the board approved the responses submitted to the presiding judge of the Superior Court in accordance with the state statute.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to vote against the motion, not that I'm opposed to most of the grand jury report, but I am to the report in Channel Islands Harbor. I would suggest, and I will offer to Mr. Bennett and to you and the board members and to you, to give you a copy of the minority report, and after I give it to you, I would like you then to discuss further evidence, the issue of evidence, whether or not it was given or not given. It will be given, the report will be given to you to study, to look at, and to respond, but to make comments like you've made without any evidence yourself, without listening yourself to the issue. I submitted the charge to the DA and the grand jury. That's the appropriate, those are the appropriate agencies. The board proved to me in closed session that it simply wouldn't hear anything negative about the harbor. Hence, I did not come public with those charges, but I did do the appropriate thing, and that is to take it to the people, to the agencies that can review such things and decide for themselves.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to point out, those agencies, the grand jury, then criticized the fact that the evidence was not made public when it was provided to the grand jury.
So, I guess there's just that, the issue about whether you should make the evidence public, you felt that that wasn't right for the time.
Is it impossible to do it before this board?
Okay.
To go on and on and on. I'll get you a copy of the report, but I would like you to consider the evidence and then answer the question. Is this evidence or not evidence?
It does sound like, though, that you are in agreement, though, that you should provide evidence when you make the charges. Thank you. Okay, so, the motion that we have, I believe, is a motion and a second to accept the grand jury report, and the vote was a three to one. Is that correct? Okay. You're not voting against it, or you are?
I'm voting against it.
You are? Yes, so it is a three to one.
Based on the comments colored by the words of the grand jury.
Your microphone's off.
The words of the grand, thank you, colored and underlined by Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. That will move us to our, is the clock saying 10:00 a.m.? Yes, it is 10:00 a.m. Our 10:00 a.m. time-certain item, and that is the public hearing on the screening of the general plan amendment from the Sherwood Development Company. And do I have any cards on this, Marta? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnston. For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer of the Resource Management Agency's Planning Division, and I'm here this morning to present a general plan amendment screening application that was submitted last October by the applicant, Sherwood Development Company, and continued to today's hearing. This general plan amendment screening consists of a request to amend a policy in the Lake Sherwood Hidden Valley area plan. This policy dictates that public trail easements through the Lake Sherwood development be located consistent with the trail corridor shown in the area plan map. The public trail under discussion today has not been constructed or improved in any way, but its future location is shown in the area plan map. It was envisioned to be original hiking and equestrian trail where the EIR, when the EIR for the original area plan was completed. Specifically, the applicant would like to remove the requirement to dedicate a trail easement for tracks located along a .95-mile stretch of Carlisle Road, where the narrow width of the public right-of-way and the location of Carlisle Creek hindered the construction of the trail. In addition, the applicant requests that the alignment of the trail be modified to reflect on-the-ground conditions that were not known when the area plan was completed back in 1987. The map up on the screen is Exhibit 2 in your board packet. It shows the location of the stretch, the .95-mile stretch of trail easement requested for removal along Carlisle Road. It also gives you the general location of what we're talking about here in the southern portion of the Lake Sherwood development. As discussed in the board letter, the future regional trail would begin at a trailhead adjacent to Carlisle Road and cut east to west through the southern portion of the Lake Sherwood development. I don't know if there's a, I don't have a little thing to show you where that's located, but in your board packet, you had a map that was much more detailed and showed you where the trail, the proposed trail location was located and how that realignment would occur. Staff reviewed this application, oh, thank you very much. So, here's what we're talking about, more or less, in this, right in this area along this portion is adjacent to Carlisle Road, is where they would be, is where the trailhead would be located. Staff reviewed this application in light of your board's general plan amendment screening guidelines and found it to be consistent with those guidelines. So, staff is recommending that your board conditionally approve this application for further processing. Again, this is a screening item, so they would come back with their general plan amendment application. However, after distribution of the board packet last week, staff revised the conditions, and that was in response to new information we received and also an offer on the part of the applicant to dedicate land or dedicate an easement for land for the trailhead, but also to design and construct the trailhead. So, the new conditions are shown here. This is the first condition in legislative format, so you can see where the changes have occurred. It's got the strikeouts and then the underlining for you. When the board letter went out, it wasn't clear which public agency would accept the trail easement. Since then, last week on September 18th, the MRCA executive board met and discussed the Lake Sherwood trail at a special meeting. It's my understanding that their board conceptually agreed to accept dedication of the trail easement for future construction. The conditions for the screening have been revised accordingly. They've also, if you look at condition number one, I can read it for you, it shows, essentially, it's showing that there may be a variation in the location of the trail based on National Parks Service standards and the negotiations that would occur between the applicant and MRCA. The applicant shall submit a general plan amendment application to amend Figure 6 of the Lake Sherwood Hidden Valley area plan to reflect designation of Alternative 3 on Exhibit 4, that was in your board packet, the big map, as the location of a trail easement for construction of a future regional trail. Said location may vary slightly through negotiations with the public agency identified to receive the easement, and as efforts to meet National Parks Service design standards are made. So, that's the first condition. There have also been slight wording changes to condition number two. It now reads, "The applicant shall offer to dedicate an easement for a trailhead adjacent to Carlisle Road where Alternative 3 terminates with Carlisle Road," and that was the location that I showed you with a pointer. "This dedication shall occur at the time that the regional trail shown on Exhibit 4 is dedicated." And then the new condition has been added as a result of the applicant's offer to both design and construct the trailhead. It reads, "The applicant shall be responsible for A, designing the trailhead in accordance with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority standards, and B, constructing the trailhead." So, those are essentially the new conditions. The applicant reviewed the revised conditions yesterday and communicated to staff their acceptance, basically that these conditions were acceptable. If this GPA screening is approved for your board, more details or by your board, more details will be worked out prior to its return as an actual general plan amendment. Unless there are any further questions of me, I'll allow the applicant to step in and provide you with a more detailed account of their negotiations with MRCA and their account of the evolution of this general plan amendment and the trail location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you like to speak first?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, Distinguished Board. My name is Scott Williams for Sherwood Development Company, and I'm here to further detail our request for this easement removal along Carlisle Road. I should have a presentation prepared.
Do we have another PowerPoint ready to go?
I do, I hope so.
They're loading it.
Anyway, I also...
There you go. You're all set.
Let me back up a little bit. The question probably arises as to why we want to remove this easement from this area, and this presentation attempts to detail that request. We have met with the residents in Carlisle, and I noticed that several of them are here today, and I'm sure they'll speak for themselves, but the residents have expressed an interest to us that we not have this trail along Carlisle Road because of its potential damage to the existing trees, the flora and fauna there. Immediately adjacent to Carlisle Road, there are significant areas of wetland habitat that are governed by the Corps of Engineers, Fish and Game, and the Regional Water Quality Board. The construction of the trail would require massive grading along the side of the road and filling in of these wetlands and removal of this sensitive habitat, which I don't believe the residents are for, we're certainly not for, and we know that these other agencies are not in favor of that as well. The trail also would be adjacent to our new golf course that we've built, which we feel is an incompatible land use, might create a dangerous situation if there was an equestrian next to a golf course.
Dangerous golfers?
Pardon me?
I know some.
Yeah. There are a few stray shots out there. Also, it's adjacent to Carlisle Road, which has automobile traffic on it, which would also present an inherent danger with potential equestrians as well. As mentioned earlier, we would offer to dedicate and construct the trailhead. I've got some exhibits here to further detail where that is. Tricia expressed where that location would be in the map you saw earlier. This would allow parking and the staging of trail users at the beginning of the trailhead. Sherwood has tried for many years to give this trail to a receiving agency, and up until last week, we were unsuccessful in doing so. COSCA had originally accepted the easement, and then, once they found out the difficult terrain and the difficult construction conditions, they decided against it. So, it sounds like and looks like MRCA is willing to accept the easement. This is the exhibit that exists in the area plan. Sherwood is shown in this highlight right here. This is the perimeter of Sherwood. This is Carlisle Road here. This is, again, the portion of the easement alignment that we are requesting removal off of the road, and we would construct a trailhead here. This is the way the trail alignment was shown in the area plan. It's somewhat schematic in nature and is not sensitive to the existing topography out there. So, as you'll see in some future exhibits, we've actually gone in and designed the trail now, and you'll see what the actual alignment looks like. This is an aerial photo of the area, and this is in here because you can see the extreme topographical conditions we have out there. It's very rocky and steep, and whoever receives the trail and eventually constructs it will be challenged by the existing conditions. Again, this details where the alignment of the corridor exists and just further details the general plan. Now, this exhibit shows a more sensitive design to the existing topography. What was shown in the general plan is about a mile and a half of trail after you actually go in and design this trail with all these switchbacks. This ends up being almost seven miles of trail. We are proposing the trailhead here and the proposed terminus here, which has the ability to tie into a trail that goes to Bonny Mountain. So the trailhead would be, again, we would dedicate the land and construct the trailhead here, and then the easement would be given to MRCA. These next few slides just are to give you a feel for the existing vegetation and topography out there. I've attempted to go into the slides and show where the corridor would exist, and each one of these slides, I'll flip through these real quickly. This is up at the east end of the easement location. You can see as we move down closer to our new development, the corridor would go through-
Excuse me?
Yes.
You're showing us now where the current trail easement is along the road-
Yes.
-that you're asking to have removed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as you go down, again, along Carlisle Road, this is where the corridor would exist, and this is where we are requesting that it not be, that we remove it in this area. We have power poles, we have very heavy vegetation. As you see further down, we get into some pretty rocky terrain. Lots of old oak trees and sycamores along the road. This is typical vegetation along the corridor. Again, these are just kind of giving you an idea of what would have to happen if we were to construct that trail. This is as you get to Carlisle Creek, the existing bridge there. We would have to bring the trail into the road or have a massive fill there. And then as we move further to the west, we start getting to some very, very rocky terrain. These are sheer rock cliffs coming down to the road. I have a few too many slides here, I'll flip them real quick. That would be very difficult to get a trail in there. I definitely went overboard on that. Okay, this is the end of our property, and this is the approximate location of the trailhead. This is the trailhead as we envision it. Again, this is Carlisle Road along here. We would come in and build potential spaces for an equestrian with a trailer here with parking for automobiles here, and then this would be the beginning of the trail that would start the switchbacks up through the mountains. The proposed trail is about seven miles, all the way from start to finish. This is the trailhead site, relatively flat, scrub vegetation. And I believe that's it. I'd be glad to take any questions if anybody has any.
Could you discuss when the trailhead would be built?
We could build it within the next 12 months.
Do you anticipate that?
Yes.
Well, I have a few cards on this, and we'll hear from the other speakers. I don't see any questions at this point. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
We do have Cheryl Phelan? Yes, Dr. Miller, would you like to come up and go first?
I'm Robert Miller, I live on Carlisle Road. I'm a vice president of the East Carlisle Road Property Owners Association. Our president, Mike Littleton, is out of town, so I'm representing the association. A letter was sent by Mr. Littleton on September 18th, which I'll read. The subject is "General Plan Amendment Screening, GPO 5-0005. The East Carlisle Property Owners Association has concerns regarding Sherwood Development Company," which I'll refer to henceforth as Sherwood. "Application for General Plan Amendment. Sherwood's project has progressed unimpeded since construction began. This association has had meetings with Sherwood's principals and supervisor parks and her staff regarding issues of great concern to Carlisle Canyon residents. Road privatization was considered to save oak trees that would have been sacrificed had the road been widened. That option was ultimately rejected by association members, but a plan for the road was discovered that had already been approved by the county that would provide for selective widening of the road. Either of the plans will save Sherwood a significant amount of money. It is not this association's goal to hurt Sherwood financially, but it is our opinion that if it's going to cost Sherwood some money to develop a workable trail corridor, that cost would be insignificant compared to the money that would, they would have to had to pay for the widening of Carlisle Road. This association is concerned about that land immediately north of Carlisle Road that borders this property. That's between the Sherwood fence line and the edge of Carlisle Road. As you are aware, the trail easement, as it is now proposed, runs along that land. We have always been concerned about maintenance of the property preclude development of fire hazard and eyesore. Sherwood has never addressed those concerns. Our concern has heightened when we read that Sherwood wants to abandon the trail completely. If Sherwood is allowed to turn their back on the commitment to establish a trail, they should be required to landscape, irrigate, and develop a maintenance plan for that strip of property along Carlisle Road. Landscaping and maintaining this area will not only preclude development of a fire hazard and eyesore, but it will add visual appeal to those properties within Sherwood's project that borders Carlisle Road." Note that we're not opposing removal of the trail. Our points are these. One, a condition should be placed on Sherwood Development's permit that they're required to irrigate, landscape, and maintain the strip of land that is destined to become an eyesore. Two, it is Sherwood Development's property and therefore legally responsible for its appearance. Three, landscaping and maintaining the property would preclude Sherwood Development's annual responsibility to perform weed abatement, which is now required by Ventura County Fire Department. Four, landscaping the property would add visual appeal at the rear of the properties Sherwood Development proposes to place on Williamsburg Way, east of the clubhouse. The back of these properties are along Carlisle Road. And five, Sherwood Development has saved a significant amount of money by not being required to widen Carlisle Road to county minimum standards, something we, of course, concur with because this is a very beautiful, pristine riparian canyon, and it would be a shame to take out hollows of trees and destroy that, which is widely used by residents of the area for bicycling and hiking and so on. I have photographs here, which I'll submit with these papers. On the back of the photographs, it explains which side of the road you're looking at, the north side or Sherwood side, or the south side, which are private property.
Dr. Miller, as I understand, then, you're looking at a particular segment that is owned by the Sherwood Development Company that you'd like to be, you'd like it to be maintained because there's a lot of weeds there, and so the request, as I understand it, is to have them revegetate it in a manner that won't have all the weeds and continue to irrigate it?
Yes, this proposed trail is apparently not going to happen, so between the edge of Carlisle Road and the fence line of the Sherwood's property is a strip of just bare land, which is a potential fire hazard as the weeds grow, because being in the bottom of the canyon, there's a lot of growth there.
And the one area that I really recall is kind of being wide there, it kind of floods in the wintertime, and that area is going to have some drainage improvements, so that might be an opportunity to work something out regarding having that vegetated too. But that's, that's something that we'll ask the applicant to, I would like to ask them.
Yeah, some of that has already been taken care of, some of those drainage problems. We won't know until the next rainy season how effective it is, but they've already done some things, and-
Also, the board did approve about a month ago the, allowing the road to pretty much remain the same, but doing work to widen the bridge, and the bridge widening will require the removal of some trees, but we were able to reduce the number of trees significantly. I think only a couple were actually going to be removed from the road, so I'm sorry that the notice that you got was just like a day or two before, but it wasn't actually a public hearing that sent notices out.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your concern. As I said, it's not just the people that live along Carlisle Road. It's a very beautiful, the trees just arch over the entire road, but it's used by increasing number of people in the community, both hikers and bicyclers, and it would be a shame to, and it's a dead-end road, it doesn't go anywhere, so the widening, we don't see as-
Yeah, so I'm glad that that isn't going to occur, that widening.
Yeah, and thank you.
And also the efforts, when I met with you a couple of years ago, to look at the request of the residents to actually get a trail built there, it looks like that might be coming forward, and I would imagine you support that.
I support that, and I'm sure that would be enjoyed by the community as well.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker then is Cheryl Phelan? Phelan? Is that P-H-I-L-E-N?
S-P-H-I-L-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not a public speaker, and I'm horrified to be here today, but I am.
Could you stand a little bit closer to the microphones? Thank you.
Yeah, basically, we are not opposed, we're thrilled that the road didn't get widened, we're thrilled that the county and Lake Sherwood and the residents all want to keep the integrity of the canyon. It is a beautiful scenic canyon, but what we're dealing with on the back of Lake Sherwood is what I would call white trashistan here. I mean, it is just the most god-awful mess that they left along that corridor, and so our fear is that now that you've taken that out to put in this trailhead, that we're left to live with this for, you know, a mile along Carlisle Canyon until you do get to the trailhead. So what we're requesting is that somehow this gets modified and mitigated in this next plan amendment that you're doing today, that just doesn't get left abandoned, to rot and become, you know, pretty much public disgrace.
And could you submit that to the clerk too, so we can have a better look at it? And again, this is regarding, it would still remain their land, just-
Yeah, but it's a complete eyesore that's been left to just deteriorate into just dirt and weeds and debris and ugliness.
Okay, and I will ask the developer to comment on it when we're done with the rest of the public speakers. This is the area that's next to the recently built maintenance building, is that correct?
That's correct.
As it faces Carlisle Road?
Correct.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment cards. Mr. Williams, would you like to comment on some of the discussion we've had? And I would also be happy to present you with these photos too, if you're interested.
Yes, I haven't seen those photos, so I'm not sure that I know what she's referring I have several concerns regarding what has been brought up here. We have continued to do weed abatement on that road for as long as I know. We go out there every fire season, and we re-debate along the side of the road to reduce the fire hazard, and we will continue to do that. So that's not a commitment that we're shying away from or ignoring. The request for irrigation and landscaping, we would have to study further and meet with the residents and understand exactly what they're talking about before we wholesale agree to doing that. I don't think we have major opposition to the request, but without knowing what the scope of that request is, I cannot commit to it at this meeting. A couple of other things I wanted to point out. Sherwood Development Company is not obligated to build this trail. When the development conditions were agreed upon back in the early 90s, the condition was that we offered to dedicate an easement to a third-party agency, which we have done many times. We've offered to several different agencies, and we've finally gotten someone to agree to accept the easement. So we never had plans to build the easement or construct a trailhead in any way. All this, all we were going to do was dedicate an easement for the corridor. So our offer to not only dedicate the land for a trailhead, but offer to construct the trailhead is not an obligation that we currently have. We're offering to do it simply to help this request go through and also to fulfill our obligations as a good neighbor. So those are the comments I would make in regard to their request.
Thank you. And you do have the photos, there's, a lot of them are just right underneath your wrought iron fence, you have weeds coming up along the road, so that, that sounds like something that could be changed.
We can, we can, we can take care of that.
And as I understand, your conditions currently are that you are to look to an open space agency or other to dedicate the trail, the trail easement, and so I'm glad to see that now we have an open space agency that's willing to take that, and so the requirement to have a trail along the road can be removed, because what we're going to get in return is actually a trailhead built and subsequently also are at the same time a trail being built too.
That's exactly correct.
We'll actually get a recreational amenity for something that's been aligned on a map for over 20 years now, so.
Yes.
Good, I'm happy to see that personally, and I, this is just the general plan screening. It still has to go through the process of public hearings before the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors, but perhaps in the interim, this issue regarding-
We'll take care, we'll take care of these weeds.
Those weeds, that would be great. Thank you very much. Are there any comments from staff? Or the board?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure that I understood this agreement that you just reached with the developer. I think he said, "We'll take care of the weeds." I think you were saying, "Will you meet with the property owners and scope the work and see?" What were you-
What I was looking at, their concern is regarding the, what you're seeing with weeds and things along the side of the road, and asking the developer if they would look into it, and it sounds like they're going to take care of it, so by the time we get back here again, we won't have this issue anymore. That's what I'm understanding. No?
As property owners, you know, we're all required by the county every June to whack the weeds, you know, for fire abatement.
Right, not, not just for fire abatement, you want these taken care of permanently, so you don't have the situation.
Well, we want to see really more of a, some kind of a plan that creates more of a scenic corridor along Carlisle Road, not just, you know, weed abatement.
Landscape plan.
Something. Because we all, you know, it's one thing to have weeds whacked back up to open space, it's another thing to have weeds growing up along a fence line, because then it just looks like a bad neighbor.
Thank you. And I don't know if that's something that staff would consider, you know, putting in as a condition. Does staff have any comments on this?
Chris Stevens, RMA Planning Division. Yeah, one comment that I, that I would share is, as you saw in a lot of those photographs, and it's been described here as kind of a pristine oak woodlands, customarily, we don't like to landscape within those areas. In fact, we had quite a debate with the Sherwood Development Company over how we define woodlands. They prefer the landscape definition because it might include their golf course, for example, in an oak woodland. We don't feel that's the appropriate definition for an oak woodland. We look for the more natural, and this, in fact, may be a protected area. So I think we'd be open to looking at it. I might be hesitant to make it a condition, because if we do get into reviewing the old environmental documents or talking with the Corps of Engineers, we may in fact find out we cannot introduce landscape material into the area, so just mention that as a caution. caution.
And also, it would be good for the staff to be able to look at the photographs too. A lot of it was right where they built their wrought iron fence, and also looking at native vegetation to deal with the issue of the regulatory environmental agencies too. But you wouldn't see this necessarily as a condition, to see that it's maintained?
I think with your direction, we will look at that issue as we move forward this, if the board does in fact screen it through the process. I'd be somewhat hesitant to suggest you make that a condition, and then we end up having to bring back something different.
Okay. Supervisor Long?
Just a comment on that condition piece. I would be hesitant to ask that there be a landscaped plan that, particularly if it includes watering, I think this is a rustic, unincorporated rural area, and the pristiness of it is that natural vegetation and habitat. And I think that weed abatement, you know, looks like they have been abiding by what is the minimum. Perhaps additional agreement for two or three times a year, weed abatement would help to address the issue. Perhaps some planting of native vegetation. I just, I would be concerned if it were to be pushed into a direction where you have a manicured landscaped agreement for the corridor, because I can't imagine that fits well with the corridor. I agree so. And certainly no requirement for putting in a watering system. Again, I think then you're really looking at urban landscaping design as opposed to what is, what I see there.
And that's something that we can leave with staff too, but certainly planting with native vegetation would be the preference, but if we're talking right next to the parking lot, you know, we're not talking about a native area.
Right, right.
Thank you. And I think that's more the issue, they've got a parking lot with the wrought iron fence, that all needs to look good on both sides of the fence. Thank you very much. Again, this is something I was a little happy to see come to fruition, had worked to find an open space agency to take this, and I'm glad that I was able to do that. And also looking at, we have some Quimby fees in the future that we can look at, that were provided by the Sherwood Development Company for Recreation and Parks specifically. And those funds are still available to actually put in the trail, at least half of the trail, and that's what we're looking forward to. And that will be coming back to the board to see if the rest of the board's in support of that too. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Do you want to make the motion?
Um, go ahead.
I'll move the recommended action with the, I think that the, where the board is, is that we just want staff to look at this issue of the landscaping and come back with suggested ways for that to be addressed. So I move that, and I would also just compliment Supervisor Parks and everybody involved. This is an improvement, in terms of overall where things were. I think the public there will benefit by having a good trail, and the trail on a better location, so.
And that would be with the amended condition that was presented today?
That's right.
Yes. Thank you, and if the Sherwood Development Company can work with the residents to take care of that, the county won't have to be as involved. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and seeing no objections, then this passes, and it now goes into the hearing process. Thank you. That concludes our 10:00 AM time certant, and we'll now move on to our regular agenda. Let's see. Yes, I think we're looking at item 29, and this is with the probation agency, who's been waiting so patiently. Good morning, Mr. Remington.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. I have two items today. The first is a request for the board to allow us to submit a grant proposal for an enhanced disproportionate minority contact grant, and approve the attached resolution to allow that to occur. Your board will remember that we received the first phase of this relatively new state program last September, so we're ending the first year, and we would like, we don't have the final report on that yet, I'll certainly share that with the board when it gets here, but we would like permission to now submit a second-year grant for us, and if approved, it would be the first of three years of grant proposals. The first would be $150,000, second year, $175,000, and the third year, $200,000. Our first year has been, I think, it's been a year that allowed us to really start to look at the data that we have, and in relation to at-risk populations, et cetera. So if we receive the second-year grant, it'll allow us to just continue in that way. We've set up a number of different work groups throughout the year, have been looking at decision points within the juvenile justice decision, justice system, and that would allow us to continue to look at that in more depth. Some of these issues are relatively subtle, and so it does take a close look at that. So that's my first request, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or a motion?
And let me say, I'm happy I brought this to you board at this time.
Yes, I was just going to compliment you for coming in to request submission of an application for a grant. I see a motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes, and the next item's number 30.
Yes, the next item is a legislative item. We have participated in state training since 1980. We're required to meet certain standards and regulations on that training, so until 2003, the state provided money for us to do that. In 2003, that money was eliminated from the state budget. However, we did continue to meet those state requirements on the training. We had to do that with essentially our own staff and using some general fund money, but most of it was our staff, and we did share some training with other counties to keep the costs down. So I'm proud that the probation staff were able to continue to meet the state requirements on training during this period of time without funding, but it did take a toll. We provide over 10,000 hours of training a year, and so that was difficult for people who already had full-time jobs. So our hope was that the money would come back, and this year it has, so I'm asking your board to allow us to accept that money, and that should be able to enhance our training for this year and years to follow.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
I'll second that. I'd also just like to make a comment. Your staff provided this training in addition to their regular duties for this three-year period of time, and that really allowed our agency to stay in compliance.
Yes.
And if they hadn't done that, so that's, you just really appreciate it when you see examples of government employees stepping up and walking that extra mile to try to make sure things get done properly. That's what happened here, and this usually doesn't get publicized. You know, when we make the mistake, that's what gets publicized. This is a classic example of one of many times I'm sure people have walked that extra mile, so you'll pass our appreciation on to your staff.
I will, thank you Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a motion? We had a motion and a second, I remember that now. Seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you very much for your report. And our next item on our agenda is item 31, and that's regarding the Sheriff's Department and accepting grant funds. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Dante Honorico, Chief Deputy representing the sheriff. We are asking that you authorize us to accept funds from the Paul Cabrudo Forensic Science Training Fund. This is a federal program that is designed to enhance the capabilities of crime laboratories across the nation. There is no matching requirement for this grant, so we would like to request your board to authorize us to accept this grant, and we did apply in time for this grant.
Good. Do we have a comments, a motion? Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hear you've got some exciting things in your future coming.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, congratulations. Our next item is item 32, and this is regarding the NIMS, adopting it. This is, we have a few of these items on our agenda today. Good morning, Ms. Hernandez.
We had one last week with the Fire Department. Good morning, Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. We are asking for your board's approval of the National Incident Management System Resolution. This is one step toward demonstrating county's compliance with a federal mandate that we adopt. The NIMS system, as many of you know already, we've had, California actually served as a model in creating the National Incident Management System. We've used this model in past disasters, we're using it now for the day fire, and this model, we know, has the standard emergency management system and the incident command system. So we're well-practiced in this system. This resolution is just one step toward our compliance with the federal mandate, along with other things that we've done this year, including training in the IS-700, IS-800. Madam Chair, you took both those classes and passed successfully. We have trained approximately 1,500 county employees and agency representatives in these two courses. We've updated our county multi-hazard functional plan, which will be coming back to the board for your approval next month. And we've also established and assessed our tracking system for tracking resources here in the county, which is another federal requirement. So with that, I'm asking, I won't read the resolution, but I'll ask for your approval.
And could you also send the link for taking the NIMS to the rest of the board?
Absolutely.
Now they're spitting some desire to have everybody certified.
Considering your involvement in responding to the EOC and getting involved in disaster management, I think that would be appropriate, certainly.
Thank you. And then also, the board chair changes regularly too, so it's good to have everyone trained. Can we do these all at once, or do we need to adopt them separately, the resolutions?
The better practice is to adopt them separately, because they're for separate agencies.
Agencies, and we have to wear different hats?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So regarding the first resolution, which is, thank you, this is again on item 32, and seeing no objections, and that passes. We do have a correspondence agenda in between here, that's items 33 through 35.
Madam Chair, and for the board, I would like, since we're doing well time-wise, I'd like to, your indulgence, to read the one letter that is in here, it's relatively short, but I'd like to read this into the record. This is just an outstanding letter, and we don't hear this often enough, again, we hear about the problems. This is to the Board of Supervisors from Dana Hus, and this is one letter of thanks. No, really. "I have bipolar one disorder, which means I'm out of my mind if I don't have my medication and occasional counseling. In 2001, 2002, many things went wrong with my life. This culminated in February 2002 in my running out of employment, money, insurance, and expensive medication." I think we know where this story oftentimes goes, but look what happened here. "I turned up late one day at the Hillmont Mental Health Clinic, freaked out. Somebody talked calmly to me, made sure I could make it until the next morning, and then sent me home. The next day, someone helped me with all the forms, got me to a psychiatrist, who got the right information, and got me enough meds for the short term. Then they transitioned me into a longer-term program with a psychiatrist and a counselor to keep me alive and focused. Next, someone helped me with all the paperwork to get my unemployment and state/federal disability. At that time, I would not have been able to do it alone. I continued to see the medical counseling staff there while I struggled to get back on my feet. I got some loans, and went back to college, finally getting a degree. Now I'm starting back into the workforce. Interestingly enough, I'm working as a counselor at Casa Esperanza, where you pay Telecare Corp. to care for mentally ill adults. They're offering insurance so I can exit the county program and make room for the next head case." Person's very... "So Ventura County's mental health programming worked for me. I'm working again, and I did not spend years on the streets ignoring tourists, which was a real possibility. Could I have done it without county services? Maybe. I mean, who knows? But it would certainly have upped the possibility of caring for me in a locked facility for God knows how long and God knows how much expense. Really, it's better for the county to have me working at Casa Esperanza than to pay for me to be a resident there. I expect administering a mental health program is somewhat frustrating. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate it."
And I just think that's just a great example of that proactive work before somebody really deteriorates too far, and we have to keep those kind of success stories in mind, and know we've got a lot of professionals out there trying their best in a challenging environment. Thank you. So I'll second the motion.
Motion second to approve the correspondence agenda, seeing no objection, that passes. Mr. Johnston wanted to make a comment.
I just wanted to highlight a letter to the commendation, our board here, Roberta, organized and hosted the association here in Ventura County, and a letter of commendation, and thank you.
And the next thing that has been added, and is part of our regular agenda then, is the Watershed Protection District, item 36, and this is also regarding the National Incident Management System. Good morning.
Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Lon Coons, Public Works Director. Tackle Laura's comments for the county. Each of these consecutive ones here are for each of the special districts, so that if the need should arise for those special districts to need FEMA funding, we'll be in place to do so by having these resolutions adopted.
Thank you.
We can just go down them one at a time.
That's the way we're told to do it. So the first, I'll call it NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System Resolution, is for the Water Works District Number One, item 37. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, 36 first, I take that all back. This is, first one is 36, and that's with the Watershed Protection District, and do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second, no objection, that passes. Now 37, which is the same, NIMS Resolution for Water Works District Number One. Motion and a second, seeing no objection, that passes. And now the NIMS Resolution for Water Works District 16. Do. Motion and a second, seeing no objection, that passes. And also, resolution for the NIMS Water Works District 17. Good, good. Motion and a second by Supervisor Long, second by Supervisor Flynn, seeing no objection, that passes. And now, we have NIMS for Water Works District Number 19. Again, a motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes. And then our last one is the Lake Sherwood Community Service District, National Incident Management System, or NIMS Resolution. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second by Supervisor Bennett, and seeing no objection, that passes also. And that concludes our regular agenda. The only thing left now is our closed session item regarding our in-home support services and conference on labor negotiations, and Mr. County Counsel, do you anticipate a, an announcement?
No, I do not.
Okay, then we will now go to our closed session, and then adjourn. Then we will now go to our closed session and then adjourn.
Check, one, two. Check. Check, one, two.
Everything's right, good.
Good.
Everything has. I don't hear.
Check on the chair.
Check, check. Check, one, two. Check.